I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
Welcome and welcome to everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVor.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazan.
Present.
Trustee Marfel.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, everyone here, good to see everyone. We would be at Item 4, Approval of the Minutes from the Board of Trustees Meeting on August 17th, 2021, and the Special Meeting on August 28th, 2021. I'd ask for a motion to approve both those sets of minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion, or questions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we would be at announcements. The only thing I really wanted to announce tonight is that we've been notified the Taste of Peoria Heights is canceled, so want to let everyone know that. And just recently, we obviously concluded the Bridge-to-Bridge, wonderful event. So now we would be at comments from the audience. Anyone from the audience want to, if you would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Comments from the audience? No one once, no one twice? Comments are closed. We would be at trustee reports. First is Administration and Finance, trustee DeVor.
Thank you, Mayor. We did put out to bid for the new position that we have for our community development. We've had a great result so far. We're getting lots of resumes in. Our application pool is looking wonderful, and we're still taking some now, so if anyone has any recommendations to make sure that people apply, so that we have the best candidate pool that we can have. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything from you, Dustin?
Just one thing. We do not have any agenda items for the September 28th Board meeting, so I'm recommending that we cancel it unless any Board member has any objections.
Does anyone have any pressing business? Any comments? So unless anyone has an objection, we'll cancel the meeting. All right, anything else, Chief Under?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Any questions? Okay, we'll go to Facilities, trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor. I've given everybody a little packet there from middle of the companies. We've been looking at the fire station number two, the roof over here for, excuse me, the roof over here for Tower Park, that needs to be, and also doing the entire, the Village Hall. And just for guesses that the very last one is for painting the wood back there. Okay, first of all, fire station number two, it has a problem with the tuck point. You go up to the joints and grab a hold of it by bare hand and pull it out. You know, that's not good. And then the roof, he's got, the first, second page, it's, without actually improving the roof surface, because all it is is basically a box. It's a, and it just, and it doesn't have gutters. So it just hits and runs off and goes wherever it wants. Well, not just for repair, just to patch the roof and tuck one in and painting the building, because the building is going to have to, currently have to drill hole in the building to drain the water, because that's why it's peeling inside and it's causing mold. So that cost us $24,200. And then to actually take care of the roof properly, he talked about putting the pitch on the roof, sort of like a hip roof, and putting a gutter system to where it will drain away from the building and everything. If we could be able to paint it, Chief Wu had even said something out he would like to have. If we get the painting part done, maybe you talk to the high school and they come down and paint the symbol for the fire department, because to come up that street, to see this block, you don't know that's a fire department. He would want to let the head people know, this is our fire department. So anyhow, then, $24,200, and then when you add, actually doing the roof property, add another $39,100. I don't know about that happening this year, Chief. Probably going to have to offer a bid on all of this.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for doing all the legwork on this, trustee Gett. These are very expensive projects, and what we are going, we are going to move forward with this process and come back with a recommendation to the Board on what we have prioritized and how we're going to pay for it. So I just wanted trustee Gett to bring this to the Board's attention, to say this is what we're working on, this work does need to be done, but some earlier than others, but we'll come back with a recommendation soon after we do a little bit more legwork. So, and also have a recommendation how we're going to pay for it.
Yeah, and then there's the Village Hall and Tower Park. He first, he came with just patching the Village Hall, and that's not what I wanted. So if you notice on this page here, it says $4,400 for Village Hall Roof Repairs. Well, you know, I got back with him, I told him, I said, I want a bid for this. Tower Park Roof Repair is $37,500. You know, I said, we're going to get all these options, figure it out, what we're going to do. And then, just to repair the shake shingles and the flat roof on this building, it's $328,000, and that will definitely have to go off the bid. But, because the chief's talked about wanting to do, replace tiles, well, there's no point in replacing any tiles. Interior, we don't have the leak taken care of. And then, the last thing is, is painting the wood, the wood back around the tower. And we're going to have to figure something else out, because he wants $7,400 to do that. I just can't see doing that. Because last time we did it was when we painted the tower, right, I, you know, we cut the, we cut the wood back there off and we took it to the high school and they painted it. But this guy's talking about having to get a lift from the park line and reach all the way up there and be able to paint that. I just don't see us spending $7,400 on it. But, I mean, yeah, it just looked a little rough, but I think he's going to have to tough it out to figure something else out for it, so.
Is there any way we can remove it again and have the high school paint it?
Well, that's, that's all costly. I mean, it's got to be cheaper, it's got to be cheaper then.
George, you haven't done with the painters, the tower, the other ones that welded on that?
Oh, it's welded back on?
Okay. And lowered down for this.
But that's, that's my mountain, so we're going to have to figure out what, you know, how we're going to take care of this stuff. Eventually it has to be taken care of. Anybody else have any comments?
Any other questions?
I kind of ran through that kind of quick, so.
Well, thanks for doing that, trustee Gett. It has to be done, because there are some critical things that I know we need to take a look at, especially the roof.
It's not going to get any cheaper. The cost of roofing keeps going up, I can tell you.
All right, so the two of you will bring back, prioritize the things that we have in this packet. Okay. Next would be Economic and Community Development, trustee Kazan.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I really would like to acknowledge this week is giving a big thank you to the Arts Alliance for their first, hopefully, annual Bridge-to-Bridge event this past weekend. I think it was very successful, and we thank you for all your hard work, and it was a great event.
If I could interrupt you, Julie, would you like to give a quick report to the Board?
So first, I think a follow-up meeting on Thursday with all of the committee members and getting feedback from each of the groups, and I feel like I'd have more content if I could trip it off to another meeting.
Okay, sure. Go ahead, trustee Kazan, then.
No, thank you very, again, thank you very much, and we look forward to more information.
Any questions? Does that conclude your report, then?
It does.
All right. We'll go to Neighborhoods and Parks, trustee Weisenberg.
Thanks, Mayor. We have a possible install date of October 4th for the new Lions Park equipment. The color of swing set that we ordered was on back order until like, the end of November, but if we went with, I believe it was the blue one, they could keep the install date of October 4th. So I'm going to follow, as long as everyone's okay with it being blue, I'm going to follow up with Playground Bus tomorrow, and hopefully lock in that October 4th install date. We sent pictures, we Google mapped with their install team. They don't foresee any issues, as long as we can get the existing equipment out, and Mike Casey and his team are going to handle that, so hopefully the install should be pretty smooth, and we'll have a new playground the first week of October. And that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, we would be at Public Works, trustee Marfel.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got a couple of things. The new backhoe that was ordered should be here soon. They're waiting on some transportation issues to get it to its final destination. And then the seal coat project is complete, and I believe the strip into the parking lot, was that delayed Friday? Okay, so the parking lot, the old parking lot and parking areas will be striped on Friday. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mike or Chris, anything? All right, any questions, trustees? Hearing none, we'll move on to Public Safety, trustee Wigginton.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a very busy couple of weeks for both the Fire and Police Departments, just all good news, though. So starting with, I want to echo trustee Kazan, as well as Mayor Phelan's comments on the Bridge-to-Bridge project. I sat down on Sunday at Dr. Soderstrom's place, and we had a very good turnout from both the Fire and Police Departments, had a lot of good conversation with Detective Brackney, as well as Deputy Chief Wu, among others. So good turnout from both the Fire and Police Department. On the Fire Department, the, you probably had noticed, we had a few trucks out for the September 11 Memorial, and some fundraisers down at Heritage Square, and I think those were very successful. And to maybe get some more specifics on how successful, Chief, do you want to comment on that?
Sure, so when we, on September 11, we were in Silo Island, the intersection there, and at $6, we made $6,400 to the Fire Department Association. The money's going to be spent to do some training and to buy some work from the Fire Department.
And, and then I think some grant stuff, too, man?
Yes, so as of today, we got the check-in, step week only, for the small equipment grant for its $25,000, $60 to buy new air bottles.
To buy new what?
Air bottles for our RSCA. So for police, basically, all the ones that we have lost over the past year due to service lack.
So, yeah, a lot of good news coming out of the Fire and Police Departments. Thank you.
That's terrific. I guess we missed the other, Chief. Anything else?
Nothing else, Mayor.
All right, any questions or discussion? Okay, any old business coming for the Board?
Mayor, I have an item. Several meetings ago, we had discussed Airbnbs and potential ways to limit them, or at least have a little bit more control on them. At the time, we weren't sure if there was anything we can do, but I recently found out that Peoria requires a special use permit for Airbnbs, and part of that process is that when someone wants to open an Airbnb, they have to apply for the special use permit. The neighbors are notified, the neighbors have an opportunity to weigh in on the potential impact on their neighborhoods. And I think it would be prudent for the Village of Peoria Heights to at least look at the way Peoria has that structured, and see if that process works for the Village of Peoria Heights. I know there's a lot of concerns about Airbnbs moving into our neighborhoods, potential issues with parking congestion, parties. I don't think that's quite the issue yet in the Heights, but it could be. So I'm hearing a lot of concerns about the impact of these commercial entities operating in our neighborhoods. So I think it would be a good idea to at least have a discussion about what, if anything, we should do to try to give the neighbors or the neighborhoods an opportunity to weigh in on the impact of Airbnbs.
Yeah, we can do that. I guess so your, your goal is to look at the Peoria model?
Yeah, well, just to have a discussion. I think when we discussed it last time, we were under the impression that there wasn't anything legally we could do, so we didn't really even have a discussion on if we should limit them, because we weren't aware there was anything we could do. But Peoria has a special use ordinance for Airbnbs, so I think it would at least be worthwhile to have the discussion whether something like that would work for the Village of Peoria Heights.
I may be entirely off base here, I don't know a whole lot about their ordinance, but I would guess that it's geared towards revenue, making sure they get the revenue council. Do you know anything about the Peoria ordinance?
Only what I've read. They, they definitely are always looking for revenue, but it's, anytime you're talking about a special use, that's a zoning-driven process, and any kind of restrictions on the location of, first of all, I'm not sure it's enforceable. There hasn't, haven't been around long enough to have a lot of court challenges, but to the extent we wanted to limit landowners' ability to rent either long-term or short-term basis, that would probably come in the form of a zoning restriction. So I would suggest the appropriate forum, because it would have to initiate with the Zoning Board of Appeals. It might be something to have that conversation first at that, at that forum, put it on a, you know, the next agenda. We just had a meeting last night, so, you know, the next meeting would be in October, but maybe put that on the October agenda as a discussion item, and, you know, discuss, you know, what the scope of that would be, what it would look like, are we limiting them to specific, you know, zones? Are there places that we would permit them and other places we wouldn't? That's what you're talking about when you talk about special use.
In the meeting that we brought this up in, I believe what we settled on at that time is that this would be under the landlord registration umbrella. So that's, internally, administration did that. We moved these 10 properties under the landlord registration, so we could, we could monitor them as well. So that's currently how we're doing it, so I'm not sure what, what the difference would be, because I'm not really familiar with Peoria's. I did read the article, but I'm not sure what that ordinance looks like, or, you know, what would be the process if that would be?
So Peoria just amended their zoning ordinance to say that if you're going to short, if you're going to have rentals of your, your property on a short-term basis, you have to have a special use permit. And, so that's just like our car dealerships, you know, it's permitted use, but only with the special approval after you go through the zoning board process and so forth. Again, I question the legality of that, I question the enforceability of that, but it's a discussion that I think is worth having, if that's what the Board is interested in.
What's the law's definition of a short-term rental?
There's as many definitions as there are communities that attempt to define it, but for the most part, they're defined as through the websites that advertise the rentals. So they define it as, you know, a rental that takes place online, you know, for less than a month. That's, everyone I've seen has always been less than a month, sometimes less than a week. So you're putting weekly and monthly rentals in a, in a different basket, and it always refers to registration, or, or, you know, renters book the reservation through an online service, such as Airbnb and so forth, the RBOs, six or seven of them. So we define it in such a way that it is effectively the Airbnb VRBO-type services.
So I do appreciate trustee Weisenberg's bringing this back to the Board, because I think that we do not have an issue right now, but we need to be proactive in preventing future potential issues, and I, so your recommendation is talking, going through zoning first on this, is what I'm hearing.
Well, we could certainly have the discussion at this Board, but any initiative to change the zoning ordinance must go through the Zoning Board. So we would be having discussion here, then again, at the Zoning Board, and then it would come back to us for final approval of an actual amendment.
Okay.
I thought maybe the, the place to actually have a public forum, if you will, it makes sense to me to do that at the Zoning Board.
I agree, and I, I would commit to working with trustee Weisenberg to have this conversation with zoning, get it on the agenda, and start to open the conversation, because what we are looking for is having a healthy balance. I mean, obviously, we definitely want people coming to our communities, staying here, living here, but we don't, we want to preempt any potential difficulty in the future.
All right, well, we'll put this back on the agenda. Thank you, trustee Weisenberg, for bringing this up. I would, I would ask you, though, counsel, I mean, this is a nationwide issue, so just looking at Peoria, I don't know, is, I mean, we probably do, but I'd look out there a little further, and ask the administrator and yourself to, when you're ready to bring this back, and I thank both of the trustees who offered to also help on this, appreciate that. Anything else on this, trustee Weisenberg?
No.
Any other old business?
Mayor, just a couple of things the chief and I had talked about, I think we're going to get on the agenda at some point in the near future, was the, we had talked previously about RV and parking issues. After speaking to some of the trustees about that particular issue, we're going to narrowly focus that a little bit more to, to address maybe front yard issues, rather than blanket what they can park on, what material they can park on, et cetera, et cetera. And that will probably come up in a future meeting. And then the noise ordinance is going to be looked at as well, just nailing down times, and whether we want to limit that, or address certain days of the week, or et cetera, et cetera. I think we've talked about the noise ordinance in the past, kind of ad nauseam, but it's been brought to attention, I think by trustee Weisenberg at one of our previous events, our previous meetings, that there's been complaints in the neighborhood, so I just wanted to let you know that we're on that, and plan to bring that forward soon.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll get right into new business. The first is Ordinance 2021-1663, an ordinance authorizing the grant of easement to Illinois American Water Company for water mains. Trustee DeVor, I'd ask for a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-1663.
And a second, please?
Second.
Go ahead, trustee DeVor.
Okay, so this is just what we talked about in our last meeting, as far as our agreement with Illinois American Water, for them to tie into some of our lines, to extend their use with also our purchase of land, or them giving us land. There were some things that changed, and I'm going to allow counsel to kind of explain to us what did change in this.
Absolutely. And Josh Harkin from Illinois American Waters here again.
Welcome.
At the last meeting, and I'll ask him to step up to the podium, but at the last meeting, one of the discussion points was the timing, how long the construction was going to take, how long the trail in particular, but also the village streets were going to be impeded, if you will, during the construction process. And I can tell you, Josh and I have worked a lot over the last three, four weeks. We've gone back and forth. I think you'll notice in the easement that was attached to the ordinance, there's a paragraph about construction timing. That was a work in process, it was, that was the, the state of the agreement, if you will, that existed on Friday when the packet went out with, with the agenda, but since then, in confirming with Illinois American's attorney, they've, they've made the request, and it's a reasonable request, to embody the construction timing issues, not in the easement itself, but in a construction agreement. And so we're working on that. We've also, they've, they've asked to adjust some of those dates, because, you know, anytime you put a deadline up, contractors, a lot can happen that's unknown when you're, you know, on a project like this. So I'm going to let Mr. Harkin talk about the timing issues, and my recommendation tonight is going to be to approve, since it's on our agenda, to approve the easement, subject, just like we did with Ameren, subject to an agreement being, you know, made on the timing issues that's consistent with our discussions tonight, your direction tonight, and then finally, the, the mayor and village administrators' approval. I think we can approve the easement tonight, subject to working out all the timing issues.
Okay, welcome.
Okay, so the time, the dates and the timeline that's in the easement document in front of you, that has been flushed out with the contractor. There's as many conversations that I've had with counsel, I've had twice as much with contractors themselves, and we feel comfortable with that timeframe. However, to give you guys a better understanding, and this is all fitting within the timeframe in front of you, to give you a better understanding of what the contractor's plan is for construction itself, over the winter months, which I'm considering January through March, the pipeline will be installed on the trail portion. When asphalt plants open up, just, just like we discussed last time, the trail will be, will be put back and fully restored as soon, as soon as possible. And then, construction on the residential streets area will also happen in April and possibly early May, which will actually condense the timeframe in the residential areas, because the asphalt plants are already open, presumably at that time, so final restoration can occur in the residential area much, much quicker.
And just on, on that timing, I think the document in front of you says 40 days, 40 working days to complete the trail, and in subsequent discussions, I think we arrived at 60 working days, and that, that gives them a couple of extra weeks. If they're, if they start that work in January and finish it at the end of March, your, 60 working days gives them a couple of weeks of, of time to address any issues that are unforeseen. I think that's reasonable, they, they're willing to, to commit to that timeframe. And then on the, the city streets, the village streets, I think it's 35 days?
Yeah, and that's allowing some buffer as well. We were originally at 30, anytime you start putting timeframes, the contractor's always going to want a little bit of buffer in there, so we do have a little bit of...
And then the, the streets won't be, will never be completely shut down, it'll be, you know, one lane of traffic will, will be, you know, maintained at all times, and I think you've committed to each block will be done, you know, within, what, 10 working days, so, you know, a week or two at the most.
Yeah, and traffic should only be down to one lane where the contractor is working that day. If they've moved on, or if they've not yet gotten to an area, you can expect two-way traffic to be happening.
So I want to thank you both for hearing me out last meeting and working this out. I'd like to come back to Glen. I thought I heard you say last meeting that Glen could be closed for a few hours or part of a day, is that still?
So the construction at Glen itself, that will be bored in, it won't be, it won't be trenched in like the rest of it. However, while they are completing that bore, the contractor can do most of their work in green space and off of the trail, so the plan is to still keep the trail open while they are working in Glen most of the time. If they cannot safely do that, and if they have to get on the trail, there's actually enough, there's enough space there that they can put a temporary trail over to actually get whoever would be using the trail from the south or the north to Glen itself to complete that bore.
And thank you for that, but let me rephrase my question. So will Glen Avenue, at any point, both lanes ever be closed down?
No.
Okay, all right.
There's three lanes of traffic there, so I think you'd be able to direct traffic. It may be, it may be reduced to maybe two lanes. You may have to use the center turn lane as a, either a eastbound or westbound lane, but I can imagine...
It would be short-term if they had to locate existing utilities, just because we don't want to hit them. It would be, it would be a short...
Well, so there is a possibility, short-term, both lanes could be closed down, that's my question.
No, they wouldn't close both lanes down.
All right.
They might need one lane to which they would divert traffic, but it wouldn't be that way for, I wouldn't think, more than a day or, a day or two.
I'm asking not so much for an inconvenience as I am for public safety, so that, that road will never be totally closed down, so police and fire couldn't get through.
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, I guess I would...
Yeah, so what I would be looking for is an approval of, we've already moved to approve the ordinance that adopts the easement. I, I think, to be perfectly clear and have a good paper trail, paragraph four in the easement is going to come out and go into a separate agreement that's going to be a construction agreement. So I would look for somebody to, you know, amend that motion to approve the ordinance, to add the caveat that it's subject to removal of paragraph four from the easement document, embodying that paragraph... embodying that paragraph into its own separate construction agreement that applies not just to the trail, but also to the village streets, with the timeline that, that Mr. Harkin just described, 60 working days for the trail, 35 working days for the village streets.
So trustee DeVore, if you're agreeable with that, I'd ask you to amend the main motion, please.
I will amend the main motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Madam clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Uh, yes, just a moment, please.
Mr. Mayor, I actually do have a comment, if I could, please.
Yes.
Let me get my notes here. As most of you can recall, this issue, which is the granting of an easement to Illinois American in exchange for 10 acres of property, it's been, it seems like a couple of years, I brought it to you guys a couple of years ago. This is something the village needs. I understand that there's some sort of inconvenience for, to, to some of the village residents and other area residents who use the Rock Island Trail, but with any new construction, there's some sort of inconvenience, whether it's to residents or to traffic. And I feel what the village is gaining in return outweighs the inconvenience. What we're gaining is 10 acres of property, which will address an extremely immediate need for the Public Works Department. And failure to approve this will have an immediate impact on the budget to approximately $25,000 a year immediately, and that's only going to rise. And I understand the mayor and others have some concern with management of the project, as the mayor stated in the, the last meeting. I think with good communication between myself, Chief Sutton, Superintendent Chandler, and Superintendent Casey, we can control the management of this project so that it does not inconvenience anybody, anyone longer than it should. I think that the big difference between this project and the others that Mayor Phelan stated on Lake Street and Prospect previously, was that we did not have a good point of contact for Illinois American Water. I have Mr. Harkin's cell phone number in this phone right here. I can guarantee you, if I hear about it, he's going to hear about it. So I, I think that concern about the management and the delays and stuff will be handled appropriately. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, mayor, I, I, that set off a comment, I just want to ask, and I know we're still on the amendment, but, so the, I'm sorry, you mentioned 20, 25,000 and immediate need for Public Works Department. So I, I'm coming from a, I don't, I wasn't here, I was on the board, so tell me, what is that?
Yeah, the Public Works Department has a need for a site to use to, I don't like to call it dump, but to store waste such for, such as from the, the street sweeper. They've run out of room. We've been looking for several, about two or three years for, for an adequate place to, to use, and this area is the perfect solution to that.
Where does that, where does that go now?
Right now, it's being stored down at, there's an area at Monita and Columbus, just south of the, uh, Heritage Square. And then there's also, there's some bins at the garage on Boulevard. Those are completely full, so we, we need an, an area immediately. And this has been, if, if we don't have an area, I just talked to Mike today, he said they're 100% full. The only other option that we can find is to truck, truck loads out to the Peoria County landfill, and we estimate that to be about $25,000 a year. Yeah, yeah. It's about, what do we say, Mike, about $800 a truck?
It's about $800.
Yeah, yeah.
And is that the land that we're currently dumping on? Is that dumping, I don't know, is that the land that we are using from Richwoods Township?
I don't.
That's not the same? There's no dumping there. Okay. That's the public works facility.
Okay, so this is our own land that we're, okay.
Which could allow us to give that back.
Yeah, okay, good.
No, we wouldn't need, maybe not need that facility.
Yeah.
All right, we're on the amendment. Anyone else on the amendment? All right, madam clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, back to the main motion as amended. Anyone else on the main motion? When you're ready, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
That passes. Next is approval of payment to Jim Axx demolition division in the amount of $7,644.70 for demolition of 4315 North Atlantic Avenue. Trustee DeVore, it asks for a motion to approve.
I make, I make a motion to approve the payment to Jim Axx demolition.
A second?
Second.
All right, go ahead trustee DeVore.
So this is for the demolition of a property that needs to be removed, so this was the, what the total cost to remove the property will be. This property has been in very rough shape for a long, long time. Lots of the neighbors have been complaining about it, and there is definitely some animal situations going on, so this is really great for the neighborhood that it's in and for our community as a whole, for us to go ahead and remove this structure.
Any questions?
And who's, who owns the structure?
It did go back on the, go ahead.
After the demolition, we will. Yeah.
Well, we will record a lien after the demolition, and then we will foreclose that lien, and it's very unlikely that someone will pay the cost, the $7,000 plus attorney fees and everything else, so we'll end up owning the lot and probably do what we've done in the past with our vacant lots, which is put it out for bids for somebody just willing to build a home on it.
And this is the same procedure that we used year, a few years back when we obtained, you know, the handful of properties that we sold. It was the same process that we went through.
So, and, and I was, I wasn't here for that, but I just, so we don't technically own it now, and have we, but I'm sure there's a water lien against this, or is?
There's a tax lien, right?
It could be, it could be, but all, the lien, the, excuse me, the judge signed the order of May 7th this year, and all.
We got a judge?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's all been, yeah, the demolition order, I didn't, we didn't just show up with a truck and a hard hat.
We got a judge, all right. We just don't pull up a bulldozer to people's houses. Okay.
No, this is, this was the demolition order signed by the judge. That's the process.
Got it.
So we're not strong-arming anybody. But just to echo what trustee DeVore said, this has been an eyesore for this neighborhood for years, and this has been a problem for code enforcement, and I'm very happy for the neighbors. They will be celebrating the day that we pull up, or Jim Axx pulls up to demo this, and I'm really happy for them because this is a quality of life issue for those property owners that live around this property. So this is a win-win for our community, and, I mean, there's a lot of work went into this, all the way down to the judge signing the order, so.
That's what I needed.
Chief, is it owned by somebody? I mean.
It, it is, and again, there's a process there to get to, to the demolition order to be signed, as far as try to make contact. But as counsel said, probably a very, very, very long shot that that happens because obviously they walked away from it then, and if they're going to come back to it, they're going to owe some money. So I think we're on the right track to getting that neighborhood cleaned up, so.
Chief, go ahead.
Chief, normally I would be open to that, but I do know the interior, that is not safe for anybody, and I know that because we've been in it, but I wouldn't feel comfortable with sending you guys in there, so.
Anyone else? Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. I failed to mention when we started new business, you'll notice that I've asked the staff to put an icon next to each resolution that ties us to our strategic goals. So I'm a firm believer that everything we do should be tied to the strategic plan, so it might not be perfect, but we're trying, you'll notice a resolution further down, there's a couple of icons there because it crosses a couple of different paths, so thanks to everybody, may that happen. Okay, we would be at approval of a stop sign fundraiser for the Peoria Leatherneck Detachment of the Marine Corps League on Saturday, October 16th, 2021. Trustee DeVore, it asks for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the approval of a stop sign fundraiser.
And a second?
Second.
Go ahead trustee DeVore.
This is pretty much what we, what we always do with a stop sign for our organizations that would like to do a fundraiser, so the Peoria Leatherneck Marine Corps League just wants to use that stop sign from, on October 16th, from 10 to 3, to go ahead and conduct their annual fundraiser.
Thank you. Then are we full or close to being full on the amount of stop sign fundraisers?
I don't have the answer to that, I'm sorry.
I think we are. If we're not, there might be one, but we're, we're close to being at capacity.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, Resolution 2021-04, a resolution in support of the application for curb grant project funding through the Safe Routes to School Grant Program. Trustee DeVore, it asks for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-04.
And a second?
Second.
All right, I have both a motion and a second. Go ahead trustee DeVore.
Okay, so we have recently applied for a grant that would allow us to make all of the curbs accessible on the way to the school. In order to receive that grant, we do have to have this ordinance in place, so that we could, if we were to win, we would be able to accept that money, to be able to upgrade the, all of the curbs on Glen.
Any questions?
What do you mean by accessible?
Um, I don't have like the exact details.
88?
Yeah, they, they, it would all be 80 compliant. So then they would be able to, like ramps to be able to get onto the sidewalk in areas?
And, and.
Like from the street?
The, the location of this grant is what we're proposing is Glen, from the school all the way down Glen. That's, so, and I know that, talking to counsel, he wanted, they needed an amount in there, so what we did is add not to exceed because we really don't know exactly what those costs are going to be. And this grant is, this, we were able to apply for this grant every other year, so keep our fingers crossed, this is, I mean, this is a large cost if we were even to get any help on this type of grant, which is greatly needed, so. Counsel, was that, was, did that suffice as far as?
It does.
Okay.
I think we're, yeah, we're fine.
Any other questions?
It, it is a very good grant. Every community applies for them, I mean, you're foolish not to, you're, you're getting, you know, 80% payment from the grant, so at a 20% match, it's hard to turn it down.
Any other questions? Discussion? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, Resolution 2021-05, a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes and the destruction of closed session verbatim recordings. Trustee DeVore, it asks for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-05.
A second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Okay, so a while back, we had an executive session where we went through all kinds of records of minutes, and we determined which were no longer confidential and should be released to the public, and which should still remain confidential. So this resolution is just us accepting those decisions that we made in closed session.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. I, I think we, Stephanie, do we need to review some additional minutes? So this is, this is actually a new resolution for an additional block of closed session minutes, so we're going to ask to actually have a closed session tonight to go through those, and then, we, we needed it on the agenda, but we'll, we'll have to approve it actually finally when we come back out of closed session.
Okay.
Oh, so this isn't the ones we already have done, these are.
No, no, we've already adopted that. We're supposed to do this every six months, so this is another.
I missed that too.
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
That's my fault.
Yep, I, I told the clerk to put it on the agenda because you can't act on it if it's not on the agenda, but we first need to go to closed session to deal with the minutes.
So normally, we come back and don't conduct any business, but tonight we will.
Tonight, we'll come back solely for this resolution.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
So we would just skip this for now, pass this with the caveat that we're going to go into closed session likely, go into closed session tonight and address this later.
Okay, so then we would be at miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous to come for the board?
Mayor, I have one to take, if you want to come up the hill, maybe move.
Go ahead, you got the dates, go ahead, do you have the dates?
Yeah, this Thursday, the 23rd, we're going to vote for a spark drive, 8:30 PM, we're going to make a traffic pickup and stuff like that, so get ready for the winter.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Any other miscellaneous? We'd be at payment of the bills. I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Any question on any of the bills or discussion on the motion? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, we'd be at the treasures report. Madam clerk?
As of the end of August, there was $4,856,411.51 in the village-controlled accounts, and in the water-controlled accounts, there was $1,692,089.16.
Thank you. You've heard the treasures report. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any questions on the report or discussion on the motion? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Marfil?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, we'd be at item 13, it's an executive session, 5 ILCS 120/2C1 personnel, 5 ILCS 120/2C6, a sale of property, and 5 ILCS 120/2C21, review of minutes from the executive session. I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for these.